All right. Hello, everybody. Welcome to the March meeting of the City of Binghamton Planning Commission. My name is Nick Corcoran. I'm currently the chairman of this commission, which is comprised of local community members tasked with reviewing site plans and special use permits for consistency with the standards and criteria set forth in the City of Binghamton code. Based on our total, on our total number of planning commission members, four members must be present to constitute a quorum. Tonight, it looks like we have seven members, which means we do have a quorum and can proceed. First item on our agenda is roll call Mario DeFolvio. Joe D'Angelo. Chris Judge. Nice. Kelly Weiss. Manny Priest. And Steve Cipresson. All right. Second item on the agenda is approval of the February minutes. Anybody see anything in the February minutes that they wanted changed or was inaccurate? All right. Motion by Steve. Second by Manny. All in favor? All right. Seven in favor, zero opposed. By the way, Tito, whoever is doing the meeting minutes, not that there was anything wrong with the previous meeting, meeting minutes, but the new ones are fantastic. They're very thorough, so. Are you up there, Jalen? All right. Shout out. All right, onto our next items, seeker determinations. All right, in this portion of our meeting, the planning commission will be reviewing documentation provided by applicants for the first time. Applicants will be called to the microphone where they will be asked to make a presentation describing their plans to the commission. Commission members may then ask questions of the applicant to clarify any items that are unclear. After all questions have been answered, the commission will deliberate and then either set a public hearing date for the project or request additional information before proceeding. To all applicants that will be presenting tonight, we ask that you please state your name and address for our records before beginning your presentation. And we ask that any member of your team who will be speaking, please give their name and address for our public record. So tonight, our first seeker determination is for the applicant Vintage Auto Imports LLC. Project address is thirty Charles Street, sorry, thirty Charlotte Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit to establish vehicle sales in an existing industrial building in the I two light and medium industrial district. If there's anybody here for Vintage Auto Imports. All right. Have a seat. If you don't mind helping us out, I think you have to just push the button once to get a green light on the microphone before you start talking.
My name is Michael Bagrevanian. I'm the vice president of Vintage Auto Imports LLC. My address is nine oh six Greenway, Woodbury, New York, one one seven nine seven.
All right.
So Vintage Auto Imports LLC is seeking a permit for use at thirty, thirty Charlotte Street to be in compliance with the Department of Motor Vehicles. With a primary focus for importing and selling cars that were never sold in the US market. We're going to be using that, we would like to use that industrial zone. As you can see in the plans with limited space to basically operate and sell motor vehicles.
All right. Pretty straightforward.
Yes, sir.
All right. Is it, is it by invite only that somebody would be coming to see the vehicles because they're kind of tucked away?
It's not by invite. It's public, but the primary sales will be through auction, but private sales or, you know, public sales will also be welcome.
Okay. All right. Anybody have any questions? Comments, concerns?
Yep, just have a question.
Sure.
Going to pull it up, but I'll just go without. So. I remember right from the drawing of the plans, there's a couple of spaces, I think, for three parking spaces outside for saleable vehicles and it's making use of existing office space. Oh, thank you. And it looked like the pretty large building. What will the remainder of the building be used for? Just curious.
I can't answer that unfortunately. That's I guess from whoever, you know, thirty Charlotte Street LLC who's leasing us the space. I don't know what their I guess businesses.
Another tenant in addition to you.
I'm going to be a tenant. Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? All right. Well, this one seems pretty straightforward. So I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing non-residential building, which is a type two action under seeker and that no further environmental review is required. All right. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right. It's seven in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at five twenty at our next April meeting. All right. Second by Steve, all in favor? All right. Seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. So we'll see you back in April and we'll have a public hearing and see if anybody has anything to say about the project.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. All right. Our next secret determination tonight is for the applicant John Tager. Project address is one oh eight Henry Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing residential building into fifteen units with thirty eight total bedrooms, including the construction of a rear addition and the resurfacing of an ancillary parking area in the C four neighborhood commercial district.
Good evening. My name is Tyler Lozey, designer of Keystone Associates at fifty eight Exchange Street, Binghamton. We're here to represent John Tager.
I'm Kanti Patel from Keystone Associates. I'm an architectural designer. My address is fifty, fifty eight Exchange Street. Nobody knows the address. Email is what we do. The oldest tax number and address was important nowadays. Emails are sticked. Yeah, who cares?
All right.
The project involves a two additions, one on the front, which is hundred ninety-one square feet and it is a foyer area with access to the building and a new lift for ADA. And on the rear, we have another addition and that is for an elevator and stairwell. And we have new parking. We utilized the existing parking spaces, but shrunk down the asphalt area. We are going to be asking for variance for rear setback. And we've required the required ERP. We are since the reduction in the previous area, we're placing landscape areas on the front near the roadway. And we are directing stormwater runoff to those landscape areas.
I believe everybody knows the building, I guess. It's in a, it's a really bad shape, but now with this new owner has taken over the building, it's going to be really screwed up and going to look better now. We have fifteen apartments for all five floors. Basement will have a laundry room and an exercise room. Every apartment will have three bedrooms only, not more than three bedroom. All the finishing on the outside will be new. Inside, everything is going to be new. Any question from anybody?
All right. Chris, yeah?
Yeah, my first question always goes to parking. How many spots are in the planned gray shaded lots? And how many spots you guys require to have for the number of units and bedrooms in the proposed plan?
All right. And with the proposed plan, are there any variances required? Did you say? Yeah.
Back on the back of the building.
Okay, rear, rear setback. Okay. And that's because of the, the addition.
The addition for the elevator and its tickets.
Yep. Okay. It's a little, it's a little hard to tell from the plan. So the curb and sidewalk all along the front. The entire length of the building is in pretty horrible shape. Are you redoing all of the sidewalk and curb in front along the street?
Yes.
Okay. So even the sidewalk that's on Henry Street, that's all getting redone. Oh, great.
Could you tell me the, the entrance of the exercise room downstairs? And will it contain exercise equipment that you guys will provide to have in there? Okay. Thank you.
Chris?
One more question. In the basement portion, there are four other rooms labeled numbers one through four. What are the plans for those rooms? Be accessible to the tenants? No. Okay.
I think that's a pertinent question because we've had a couple of people in recently that have had large, open basements that the tenants were then, let's say, unknowing to the owner, they were having parties in the basement. But you're sure there's no. Okay. All right. And all, all new sprinkler system in the building or? Yeah. All right. All right. Any other questions? Comments, concerns? It's great. The building needs to be renovated. So that's great. All right. If there's no other questions or comments. I'll make a motion that the proposal is an unlisted action under seeker and that the planning commission should act as lead agency for review. All right. Second by Chris, all in favor? All right. Seven in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at five twenty-five at our April meeting. All right. Second by Steve, all in favor? All right. Seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. We'll see you back in April. Thank you. All right. All right. Our next and last secret determination for tonight is for the applicant William Durham. Project address is one seventy-four Clinton Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of a retail cannabis business, delivery only in an existing commercial space in the C four neighborhood commercial district. Is there anybody for the one seventy-four Clinton Street project? Would like to talk about that project? If I want to, if we wanted to reorder this and put them later in case they're coming later, is that all right to do? Not tabling it, but just taking them out of order. Okay, I'll make a motion to table the project until later in the meeting if the applicant shows up.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Second by Chris, all in favor? All right. Seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. So that concludes secret determinations unless the applicant for one seventy-four Clinton Street shows up. So we'll move on to the next portion of our meeting, which is public hearings and final deliberations. So in this portion of our meeting, we will be holding open public hearings to obtain public opinion in regard to specific projects that are up for review. Applicants will be asked to come to the microphone and make a brief presentation describing their project. For most projects, this is the second time we were reviewing your information. So it would be very helpful if you could please give us a brief overview of your project to remind us what you're planning. But then clearly identify any changes that have been made since the last time we saw you. When the applicant is done presenting and any clarifications have been reviewed, we will open the public hearing and allow members of the community to speak about the applicant's proposal. After the commission has heard from all community members interested in speaking tonight, the public hearing will be closed and the commission will deliberate. To our applicants, when your project name is called, please come to the microphone and start off by giving the name and address of any members of the applicants team that are planning to speak for our public record. And anyone from the community that will be speaking in regard to a project tonight, please also start off by stating your name and address for our records. For anyone unfamiliar with the format of a public hearing, we'll be opening the microphone to solicit public comment about a specific project that are up, that's up for review tonight. Public comments should be directed to the members of the planning commission and staff and not directed towards the applicants. It is not acceptable for any member of the public to enter into any form of discussion with an applicant during the, the meeting tonight. The commission members will take note of any specific questions or comments that come up during the public comment portion of the meeting. And when there are no additional community members wishing to speak about the project, the public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the applicant will be given a chance to respond. The commission members will ask the applicant to comment on any questions that were brought up by the community if they are relevant to a site plan review. It will again not be acceptable for any member of the public to attempt to enter into a dialogue with the applicant while they respond to questions or comments that arose during the public hearing. Now, the time for us to hear from the public will be while the public hearing is open. Once it's closed, the public is here as an audience to the proceedings. Any member of the public who cannot abide by these rules will be asked to leave. All right. So for tonight, our first public hearing is for the applicant Garrison Paw. Project address is four oh seven Court Street. This is a site plan review for the construction of a three hundred and sixty-four square foot, one story sales office building on an existing vehicle sales lot in the C one service commercial district. Welcome back.
Cipresson? Yep, Garrison Paw. My address is thirteen eighty-seven State Route seven.
Yeah, same address.
All right. Anything changed since the last time you were here?
The only thing that changed, we still plan on putting the office building there, but I did in the drawing, put a six by twelve addition on for a bathroom and more storage space for stickers and foremost, that kind of stuff for the vehicles, tires shine, cleaning materials, shop back, stuff like that. Okay. So other than that, no.
All right. Did that got submitted to Tito or?
Yes.
Oh. I don't think we have a copy of that one, do we?
I do not have a copy. Let me double check.
All right. Hold on, hold on one second.
Okay.
I don't think we've seen the updated plan yet. So the building in general, it was staying in the same place. It was just getting a little addition.
Yes.
So and you're putting it right in the center of the, the lot?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Do you want me to resend it so it's a little bit fresher? So they're not digging through?
I see it. Yeah, there's a six by twelve addition on to the east side of the building.
Yeah.
And it looks like it'll just be for a bathroom and additional storage.
Yep.
I can add it to base camp now.
All right. Everybody have access to base camp. Tito throws it up there. Joe's already on it. Four. He's waiting. Do you want to have a contest to see who can get it first? All right. Hold on one second. We just want to make sure everybody's looking at the right plan before we open the public hearing. Any new developments in car sales, the world of car sales?
No.
All right.
It's at the bottom of the file list. It's named attachment one. There's also an image showing what, what the shed would look like.
All right. Oh, I got you. Oh, I got you. Attention one. Are there, everybody able to find it? All right. All right. Any questions or comments before we open a public hearing? Pretty straightforward. All right. We're going to open the public hearing if you don't mind, just stepping off to the side for just a second. So anybody who comes up to the microphone has clear access. All right. So this is going to be the public hearing for the applicant Garrison Paw. The project address is four oh seven Court Street. This is a site plan review for the construction of a three hundred and sixty-four square foot, one story sales office building on an existing vehicle sales lot in the C one service commercial district. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. All right. And we didn't receive any letters about this project, correct?
No.
All right. So no letters received and nobody approaching the microphone. So we'll close the public hearing if you don't mind coming back. All right. Last chance, questions, comments, concerns? All right. Seeing none. I'll make a motion. So at the last meeting, we decided this, this was a type two action under seeker and that no further environmental review is required. So I'll make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review have been met. All right. Second by Kelly, all in favor? All right. Seven in favor, zero opposed. All right. You're off and running.
Thank you.
Good luck. When, when will it be open? Month and a half. So if we need a new car in about two months, come to Court Street. All right. Excellent. Thank you. All right. Tonight, our next public hearing is for the applicant Flower Hill Hobb LLC. The project address is one twenty-seven Murray Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the addition of two dwelling units to the third floor of an existing seven unit dwelling for a total of nine units with nine total bedrooms in the R three multi-unit dwelling district. Welcome back.
Thank you for the opportunity. We met last month with the zoning board and I think cleared the remaining hurdles there. Changes are noted on the file. We brought extra copies if you didn't have a chance or don't have a good view on your computer.
All right. Do you mind stating your name and address for a record?
Sorry.
That's right.
Michael Decortiva, twenty-four oh six New Hackensack Road, Poughkeepsie, New York.
All right.
Subject property, one twenty-seven Murray Street.
Perfect. Yeah. Anything change between last set of plans and this set of plans?
We added, we added one parking space to make eight. Any other changes were for cosmetic? I think he changed the stairs to the rear porch to face a different direction. Nothing that I'm aware of.
All right. I think that was the big one, the, the parking change between last meeting and this one. So that's, that's great. You were able to get the extra parking space in there. All right. All right. Any questions, comments before we open a public hearing? Nope. All right. All right. So we're going to open a public hearing if you don't mind just stepping off to the side for one second. All right. So this is the public hearing for the applicant Flower Hill Hobb LLC. The project address is one twenty-seven Murray Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the addition of two dwelling units to the third floor of an existing seven unit dwelling for a total of nine units with nine total bedrooms in the R three multi-unit dwelling district. If there's anybody here who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. All right. And this one. We didn't receive any letters.
No, we did get comments from the county. They found no significant countywide impacts. They did suggest that the planning commission should consider the compatibility of design colors and materials for the proposed new shed dormer roof, exterior egress staircase and porches and exterior stairs with the historic character of the house.
All right. All right. Seeing nobody else approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing if you don't mind coming back. All right. Any last questions or comments, Chris?
Just a comment. I do want to thank the applicants and his, his team for increasing the parking to an eighth spot. The proposal still requires nine. So the applicant will be looking for a reduction by one for what he's required, if I understand that correctly.
You could have granted that, but the zoning board already did as part of their variance review. So he got, he got a variance for parking when he went to the zoning board. So they already did that.
Right. Okay. Interesting. Okay.
They beat us to it. All right. All right. Any other questions, comments? Alright, any other questions, comments, thoughts? Alright, seeing none, I'll make a motion. So at the last meeting, we decided that this was a type two action under seeker because it involves the reuse of an existing residential building, so no further environmental review is required. And so I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met. Alright, second by Manny, all in favor? Alright, that's seven in favor, zero opposed. Alright.
Thank you very much. I hope they'll be proud of our project.
Alright, looking forward to driving by and seeing it in construction. Alright, our next public hearing is for the applicant Michaela Fargnoli. Project address is one thirty-eight to one forty Washington Street. This is a site plan review for the construction of a new two-story, two thousand square foot eating and drinking establishment in the C two downtown business district.
I have to accuse myself since I have worked on Rich's campaign, the legal determine that that was the best course of action for this. So I'll sit this one out. Great project though, I'm excited for you.
Alright. Alright, welcome back.
Good evening, everyone. Great to be back. Thank you very much. Presented the project about a month ago at the last meeting. And I guess the only update at this point would be that incorporate or plan to incorporate all the comments that we received from COD that had to do with symmetry regarding garage doors and their comments were consistent with our goals of making sure that the building blended in with the neighboring buildings and the neighborhood itself. My name is Rich David and the project location is one thirty-eight to one forty of Washington Street in downtown.
Alright. Alright, so no other real changes between last meeting and this meeting?
Nope.
Alright. Alright, any questions, comments before we open public hearing? Alright, if you don't mind taking a step off to the side. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Michaela Fargnoli. Project address is one thirty-eight to one forty Washington Street. This is a site plan review for the construction of a new two-story, one thousand nine hundred and eighty-four square foot eating and drinking establishment in the C two downtown business district. If there's anybody that would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Alright. Well, we didn't receive any letters about this project either, correct Tito?
That's correct. We did get county comments, again, no significant impact, but they did concur with the staff comments that the city should consider a maintenance and or security plan for the two alleys that will be created by the construction of the building.
Okay. Alright, seeing nobody else headed towards the microphone, we'll close the public hearing. If you don't mind coming back up? Alright. Any questions, concerns, comments? It's still off the table of bringing back the Royale as was? Alright.
Unfortunately, yes.
Alright, gotta check one last time. Alright, if there's no other questions or comments, I'll make a motion. Tito, at the last meeting, did we decide this was a type two? Action?
This is an unlisted action.
This is unlisted.
No, I'm sorry, this is type two because of the size of the building.
Okay, alright, so yep, at the last meeting, we decided this was a type two action, so no further environmental review is required. And so I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review have been met. Alright, say goodbye, Chris, all in favor?
You need one more vote to reduce the rear setback requirement by thirty-three percent.
By thirty-three percent? Alright, we'll do that one first. I'll make a motion to reduce the rear yard setback by thirty-three percent. Say goodbye Manny, all in favor? Alright, six in favor, zero opposed. And the same motion that the requirements for site plan review have been met. Say goodbye, say goodbye, Chris again, all in favor? Alright, six in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.
When does construction on this one start?
Well, the checks will be written tomorrow, so hopefully the Essex Steel, who's the contractor, the providing the materials, has given us about a six to eight week delivery.
Alright.
And then the actual building, the erection of the building, it's estimated to take place about two to three weeks and then the interior work is about thirty days after that. So that puts us around the June, July timeframe. And of course, that's if all goes well, but you know, that's, that's our estimated timeframe. So the midsummer this year is the goal.
Alright, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, our next public hearing is for the applicant John Burns. Project address is ninety-one Front Street. And this is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing private parking lot to a commercial parking area in the C one service commercial district.
Yes, Steve. Going to recuse myself from this section of the meeting due to my service on the Binghamton City School Board with the high school being neighboring property.
Alright, excellent. Welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Name and address for our record.
Okay, my name is John Burns and my primary residence is Four Stone Road in the town of Binghamton.
Alright. Anything changed between last meeting and this meeting?
No, I mean, the suggestions that were made by the board, you know, increasing the landscaping and, you know, the things that we agreed to. You know, we're a hundred percent on board with that and pretty much.
Alright. One question. So just happened to be down there for parade day this last weekend and I noticed that the the property has a garage and a pretty significant retaining wall. It runs kind of right down the, we're on the left side of the plan, you've got parking laid out. I forget if we talked about this last time. What's happening to the garage? Is that coming down?
Garage is gone.
The garage is, it's already gone?
It's already gone.
Okay, so you're just?
We removed the garage and then the ramp up to the garage, which was, you know, on the same altitude as Binghamton Club.
Yep.
That we had that brought down and then we put asphalt, preliminary asphalt because we have you know, scheduled to do the entire parking lot and then line it.
Alright.
So that's gone. And so we, you know, we created also another thing. Back when they, they were keeping the, Peterson was keeping garbage cans up there. That's not there anymore either.
Okay.
So.
Alright, excellent. Alright. Any questions, comments before we open the public hearing for this one? Alright, alright, if you don't mind taking a step off to the side. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant John Burns. The project address is ninety-one Front Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the conversion of an existing private parking lot to a commercial parking area in the C one service commercial district. If anybody would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Welcome.
Evening. My name's Nate Van Y. I'm an attorney with Cofflin and Gerhart. I'm a resident of sixty-three Matthew Street, also on the west side. I'm representing Front Street Apartments LLC, which owns ninety-three Fourth Street.
Okay.
So my client, of course, is directly adjacent to this property and we submitted some written comments to Tito earlier this afternoon along with several attachments. I'm hoping that most of that has been forwarded to all of you and most of what I will be saying tonight will be reiterating much of what was included in the email from earlier. So there's five major points that I just want to outline briefly. The first is that the property currently isn't even in compliance with the site plan that was approved back in January thirtieth of twenty nineteen. The site plan contemplated use at eighty-eight Front Street, just across the street, as well as this particular property that prior site plan required that this property have been fully restriped and repaved and as well have some landscaping at the front of it along Front Street, neither of which appears to have been done. You know, just walking by there earlier today, you can see, of course, landscaping evidently not there, hasn't been at all since that approval in twenty nineteen. So we think it inappropriate that a site plan be approved for a use when they haven't been able to show compliance even with the current site plan in place for four good years. The second issue is that the proposal that they've submitted doesn't appear to meet the code requirements for an off-street parking lot. There's three items in particular that at least jumped out to me and my client when we were looking at it. The first is that for every ten parking spaces on an off-street parking lot, there's supposed to be a nine-by-eighteen-foot landscaped area. That would require, I think there's forty parking spaces proposed, so either three or four, depending on how you do the math, space of landscaped areas to the interior of this lot shown. The next is that there's supposed to be two, excuse me, two by, two foot by six foot bike spaces, again, for every ten spaces parking. So there should be three or four bike spaces shown on this property as well. In addition, there is no area shown for designated snow storage area, which is all, again, applicable to an off-street parking lot. Now, you might, you might ask, what's the big deal? Because this is an existing parking lot and why not just swap it over to a commercial paid parking lot? And I would posit to you that this is an opportunity for the planning board, of course, to bring this parking lot up to appropriate standards. You know, your code has a goal in mind of having an aesthetic pleasing, you know, impactful, beneficial area for the community instead of leaving basically a concrete asphalt wasteland, which it currently is. The third issue that I wanted, my client wanted to bring up is that it appears that this property has, at some point since the approval in twenty nineteen, actually operated illegally as a paid parking lot. As the owner of the building next door, he has residents who have actually paid for parking at that lot. It's just an issue that it appears if there's ongoing code violations and things like that, can you believe that a property will be used appropriately going forward under some different site plan approval? The fourth issue is largely just community impact to that particular area. The plan, we believe, doesn't really add anything aesthetically or of character to the streetscape in that area. You know, I touched on that kind of briefly that this is an opportunity, if you hold the developer to the standards in your code, to improve this particular lot in that area. So this kind of reiterates that point. The plan otherwise doesn't seem to align for the goals for Front Street. The black chain-linked fence, for example, we believe that it would be an eyesore. It's out of character with the surrounding properties. You know, they have a historic pre-war sort of aesthetic to them. And then the businesses in that area who might be potential customers of a off-street commercial parking lot have been successful without that. Look at the Red Jug Pub, for example, or Tie Time just across the street, as well as the numerous student housing developments in that area that are making do without any particular paid commercial parking. And then finally, of course, I represent the person who owns the property just next door. There would be specific impacts to him. That chain-linked fence is proposed to be directly on the property line, which would be prohibitive to his ability to access and make repairs or visually inspect from the public view, the side of his building, if there was ever any issues or concerns with his particular building there. In addition, there's that stone wall that extends in the back from along the property line. The only way to really access that or to review it and inspect it would be from this area as well because there's an existing garage, my client tells me, that is owned by someone else back there that prohibits access to the stone wall from my client's property. So I just ran through a lot. I understand that, you know, again, I'll repeat, it's outlined in the email that we sent earlier. We'd asked that you either deny the project tonight just outright based on the things that I brought up, or at least recognize that variances would need to be received for many of the design failures that are evident and which I've outlined. I don't believe that you, as the planning commission, have the authority to grant variances for those particular things because they're not the bulk requirements that the planning commission can typically provide a variance for. I think they would need to go to the ZBA. So that's it in a nutshell. Thank you for your time and look forward to hearing the decision.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anybody else who would like to speak about ninety-one Front Street?
Do you want me to speak to the variance issue?
Sure.
So because this is an existing parking area, the way we interpret it is, as long as it's not becoming less conforming, it doesn't, it doesn't require a variance. So this is moving towards conformity. And so even though it doesn't meet the current code, it's an existing parking lot that's becoming more conforming. In practice, we typically don't, don't make applicants get variances for that. That being said, it is an opportunity to bring the parking lot up to our current standards. So, you know, I do agree that those things would be beneficial, but that's just an explanation as to why we didn't have the applicant seek a variance. It's because it's an existing parking lot.
Alright. Alright. Seeing nobody else rushing the mic, we'll close the public hearing for this project. You can come back up. Alright, so if you'd like to address any of the comments, you're welcome to it.
Well, the let's see here, I just received this when I walked in here. You know, it indicated that, you know, that we weren't taking care of things or, you know, that I don't know exactly how to interpret what he's saying, but the same owners have invested in the corner of Front and Main, hundreds of thousands of dollars at eleven Main Street. Thirteen Main Street is a, is a new business that is going in there that and then there's two, four and six Main Street, which is a complete restoration, looks like a beautiful building. We don't have a tenant in there at the moment. But there's been a a small fortune invested into that, the corner of Front and Main and, you know, to imply that we're irresponsible in any ways, I think, short sighted. As far as the snow removal, we would either have the snow removed, you know, with trucks, or we would just eliminate some of the parking spots during that period of time in the back. We would have them. But I, I do find it amusing that they say that, that the that the, the restaurant across the street, Tie Time, and the one around the corner has been functioning perfectly without a paid parking lot. Because they've got a free parking lot. And so, you know, of course, they're, they're not, you know, they're parking in our parking lot. If you go by there, any, any of us goes by there at night, you'll see that the parking lot is If you go by there, any, any of us goes by there at night, you'll see that the parking lot is full all the time. And so, and also, you know, it's unfortunate when I was called by this attorneys and client asking me for, you know, to rent the parking spots that we couldn't, we couldn't help him out and that he, you know, he kept reaching harder and harder to to, to have us, you know, make a special case for his clients or his tenants that we couldn't do it because it's just not a big enough parking lot. So I don't know what the motivation is other than, you know, sour grapes or something, but, you know, we, we have worked very hard on getting this accomplished. I think it will help the bars, the restaurants, any businesses there, someone will be able to park. They'll be able to, you know, stay for a period of time and leave and, you know, it's in paper, you know? So really, that's basically where we are and I think it'll look beautiful. It'll be very nice. We'll, you know, upgrade it from where it is now and we'll try to keep the the neighbors garbage off our parking lot. So that's it.
All right. All right. Any questions or comments? Chris?
I have a series of questions for the applicant. Mr. Burns, if you'd be willing to address these specific questions. First, addressing why this lot has not been repaved since the previous planning commission decision back in 2019?
Well, it was repaved. It just, I, you know, I wasn't part of that process, but we did a lot of paving in there. It just wasn't all done at once. So you know, it's, it's all going to be all done at once now because it's it's a paved parking lot that, you know, we will want to attract people there rather than, you know, have it look not its best. But it, it, it has been being paved and, and, you know, it's just, you know, kind of patchy rather than a complete paving.
Address the lack of plantings and shrubbery around Front Street as noted in the previous approval from 2019?
Well, the, the I, I can't answer that. I don't know the answer to that. That was, you know, that's before I got involved.
Okay. Do you, do you see why some of us on the commission may have concerns that were raised in the public hearing? That if this current property is not in compliance with the previous 2019 decision, there's concerns that granting a decision now 2023 may not be made in compliance?
Well, I think that you'll find that when there is a capital inflow on an investment that people pay more attention to getting things done. And there is a, with it being a, a, a money or, you know, a, a business, a parking lot business that we will take care of it like a business. It's been, it's been like a, a parking lot that was revenue negative for years and, and you know, and it's been it's, and I wasn't running it. So I think that I think that you'll find that with me running it, it will.
Did you take a, a, a role in the ownership and or operation of this lot, of this lot?
Yeah, within the last year.
Um, can I ask you, ask some of the questions that were brought up? Are, are you and the, and the team that you're working with willing to address things like adding the landscaping items, landscaping islands? Adding the bicycle parking and adding the snow storage per sections? And Tito, I'm going to assume that this, these citations are correct because I am not an expert on the city code. Section four, 10-55, section D3, section H and section I per the letter that was submitted and was referenced during the public hearing.
Correct.
Concerns about landscaping item, islands, bicycle parking and snow storage?
Well, snow storage, right now it is 40 parking spaces. Okay. So if we get enough snow to take up two full parking spaces, then we have a 38 space parking lot. If it takes five, if we takes 10, it doesn't matter. We just put the snow in the back. If we decide that that's not working, then we will have the snow removed, just like they do in a lot of cities and a lot of areas, parking lots. So, so we, I, I don't know how, how snow taking up some parking spaces is a is a big concern. I don't, I don't, I don't know that. But as far as landscaping goes, we aren't going to have an operating parking lot until they tell me in, in code that we're going to be operating. Okay. So it's going to be landscaped. It's going to be paved. The lines are going to be painted into the parking lot. Everything's going to be all set. So there won't be any concern.
Would, would you and, and I forgot who did the actual site plan here, lamb dot E N G, whoever they are. Would you believe in work with them to develop an updated second draft of the site plan to reflect those, those points in the code, sections D3, H and I, so they're reflected on paper?
Reflected, what, what islands in a 40-lot parking lot?
And the bicycle parking spaces and the snow?
We can't do, we already went over the, the
So you're declining to update the?
I can do the, the bicycle spots. But I don't think that there is enough parking spots in that parking lot.
Okay. So if I understand you, so if given the opportunity, you're, you're not willing to provide an updated?
I don't understand what that means. Given the opportunity, I'm not going to.
Sure. You want to come back next month with an updated plan?
What would change in the plan? I, I don't understand.
The plan would show for us to review the bicycle parking, the snow space and the landscaping islands.
You know, I called the office today and I said, do I need to bring anything further about what we discussed? And I was told that what we discussed, it'll be fine as long as we all, as long as we all agree to the, the same thing. I have not been required to have the islands. Okay. I haven't been required to have that.
All right. I'm, I'm just going to jump in real quick. Just a reminder that these are only one commissioner's comments. It's not, everybody is not asking for this.
Fair enough. One last question, and this may be directed to Tito. Tito, one of the other questions that was brought up was the issue of the chain leak fence and access to the neighboring property. What are the rules for a fence setback?
A fence can be built right up to the property line. In some cases, if it's near a window, it, it can't be a privacy fence of a certain height that would obstruct that window. It would have to be set back three feet from that window, but that's, that's not the case here.
And the reason that it says chain link fence is because that's the term that I was reading in different documents. The, our, our fence may very well be an upgrade from a chain link fence. So.
Let me ask one question then. Chris, would you be okay if, if we made a conditional approval? So we could go for, so in general, on a parking lot that doesn't have interior, interior parking spaces, the islands. We have in the past, we've been okay with providing the landscape buffer, putting any of the landscaping that we would have wanted in an island. We've been okay with shifting it to the landscape buffer around the perimeter. Because in general, things in islands, if they're not well maintained, which a lot of times they're not, they get damaged and they die. Would you be okay if we? So let's say we took this plan and we did kind of what Tito was saying, we took this opportunity to bring it up to code for the landscape requirements. And just required a revised plan that the planning department is okay, that meets the landscaping requirements in the code. Would you be okay with that as a kind of a compromise? Yeah. I think snow removal is just kind of putting a dash line on the back of the parking lot, saying this is the snow removal area. And you said you're okay carving out a bike parking area in the, in the lot? Are we okay for that's, it's a conditional approval that just that revised plan that you're asking for?
Dude, do I get to charging for the bike park? Kidding. But it'll look good. You're going to go by and you're going to go, Burns said he did, Burns said he's going to do it and he did. You'll like it.
All right. Are you okay with that? Is the conditional approval just submitting a revised plan after tonight, assuming you get an approval to Tito?
Wait another month in order to, okay, so I'll just
As long as Tito approves it, you get your approval.
Would have done it today.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments or concerns or?
I just want to point out that i- if you do approve this, it should be subject to an agreement being submitted between the owner of 91 Front Street and the owner of 88 Front Street reserving a minimum of four spaces in this lot for the use of 88 Front Street per the previous approval.
All right. So you can't store so much snow that you get rid of the four parking spaces for?
I actually met with Amicus too and, and they're, you know, we have an understanding about four parking spots.
Okay.
For the building across the street.
Just declare, we would need something in writing.
Okay.
All right. I'll provide that.
So a revised plan and an agreement?
Yep.
For four parking spaces for 88 Front? Okay. All right. Well, if there's no other questions or comments? This was an unlisted action? All right. So I'll make a motion for a negative declaration based on seeker review based on the following comments or questions. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land? No or small impact? Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? No or small impact? Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkways? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies or public or private wastewater treatment utilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? No or small impact? Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No. So based on those items, I'll make a motion for a negative declaration for seeker review. All right. Second by Manny, all in favor? All right. That's six in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion that the requirements for site plan review and special use permit have been met contingent on the following. That a revised plan be submitted to the planning department that shows landscaping that meets all code requirements. That shows where the anticipated snow storage area will be. And it includes the required code compliant bike parking spaces. It also will note that the lot is to be resurfaced and striped. And along with that revised plan, a letter, the documents that four parking spaces that are assigned to 88 Front Street approval are being reserved in this lot. All right. Yep. That's the conditions of approval. All right. Second by Chris, all in favor? All right. That's six in favor, zero opposed. All right. You're welcome.
Thank you, everyone.
All right. Onto our next public hearing. So this is for the applicant, the Addiction Center of Broom County. Project address is 15 Charles Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit to convert the basement of an existing mixed-use building to social services use slash warming station in the I2 light and medium industrial districts. Welcome back.
Hello. Good evening. Carmela Pirich, 30 West State Street, Binghamton, New York. I'm the executive director.
Sarah Campbell, Hemen Howard and Catal for the applicant. We also have Woodstone Associates over here.
All right. All right. If you don't mind reminding us what you're planning and then anything that's changed.
We're planning to put in a Code Blue warming station in the basement of 15 Charles. And that's a site where individuals would come and be able to spend the night from 5:00 PM in the evening till 7:00 AM in the morning when the temperature is 32 degrees or below.
All right.
And we have no changes.
All right. All right. Any questions or comments before we open the public hearing?
I too actually have a question and we may have gone over this in the last meeting, but I know that this has been asked of me. So on these days that, that people would be able to stay there on the cold and the, and the, and the hot days. What is the timeframe that they would be in and out of the facility?
They would be able to come in at 5:00 PM and then they would leave at seven in the morning.
I guess the next question is how are they transported back and forth to assure that they're just not in the neighborhood?
We have a fleet of vehicles, so we can coordinate pickup spots for people. But some individuals might be walking. I mean, they're on our way in here. There was a homeless person going through the metal detector trying to get housed tonight because we have a Code Blue night tonight.
All right.
Just a quick question. So if the temperature is 35 degrees and someone tries to come in after five, would they not be allowed in?
All right. So tonight, because the seems that there might be a lot of people in the audience that are here for this particular project. If everyone doesn't mind making sure they speak into the, right directly into the microphone so everybody can hear. All right. All right. Well, let's do this. Let's open the public hearing and we'll see what everybody has to say.
Steve, oh, sorry. I have a question before you scoot to the other side. This may have been said when you were here last month, but just for my benefit and anyone else who wasn't here to listen. Please tell me about the security procedures in place, particular what's keeping people in once doors are locked for the night.
Well, it's on a voluntary basis. We wouldn't require anyone to stay. People would be required to go through a metal detector if they had anything that was unsafe. They would have to give that to the staff. We could store. If someone came in with a pocket knife, we would hold that. And then their items would be returned to them in the morning. We would have staff that are trained in crisis management, de-escalation, mental health. All of our staff are currently trained in those things. And if, if need be, if there was an incident, we would have to just call the police or give someone a warning. And you generally the policies are kind of three strikes and you're out if the person's not able to redirect their behavior.
So I'm not locked in for the night per se. So I turn in my pocket knife at the beginning when I arrive. 3:00 AM, I decide I don't want to stay. I can Three AM, I decide I don't want to stay. I can take my pocket knife and leave. Is that? Okay.
Alright. Alright, well, let's open the public hearing. Alright, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Addiction Center of Broom County. Project address is fifteen Charles Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit to convert the basement of an existing mixed-use building to social services use. Warming station in the I two light and medium industrial district. If anybody would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone after this gentleman. Alright, welcome.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Adam Kip. My address is one twenty Craig Road, Binghamton. I own three businesses right on Clinton Street, just a couple of blocks away from fifteen Charles Street. Over the last ten years, we've invested over a million dollars in renovations and the cleanup of that area. If anyone's not familiar, we have the Old Union Hotel. We have the Old Union Banquet Hall, which is located at One Gray Street. And we also have a warehouse that we run out to a contractor and use as vehicle storage. Again, we've. Invested over a million dollars in not only renovating those buildings, but we've taken down a couple, three different dilapidated structures. One was a. Old dress shop that had been abandoned for over twenty years. Another was an old garage that had a had a tree growing right through the roof and then another old apartment building. So say the least, we've we've definitely been doing everything we can and reinvesting into that neighborhood, which. The first ward neighborhood, in particular Clinton Street, is a obviously a very historic neighborhood. We still have all the old antique shops there. And I didn't realize it until we actually, you know, opened our business over there, the amount of traffic that goes down Clinton Street on a daily basis. I don't want to come here as a incompassionate person, as a cold-hearted businessman. I'm here as a concerned citizen. Another one of our, we do have a charity that does help. Anything in the community that may be needed, first ward charities, we hold numerous benefits. I right now have multiple coats and gloves in the trunk of my car, which I do every winter. So if I see someone. Outside in the cold, I have it right there handy to get to them. So please don't think I'm here as a heartless person. I have a lot of compassion for the homeless and. And Broom County has a major homeless issue. But I am a concerned citizen. Just a few facts here from the National Institute of Health. The rate of violent crime amongst homeless people is is forty percent more than in the general population. Nonviolent is twenty-seven percent more. A homeless defendant is significantly more likely to victimize strangers and be repeat offenders. Um, according to the American Psychological Association, the rate of mental illness is two times. In homeless population than the general population. And according to a study at the Department of Criminology and Statistics at the University of Pennsylvania, the presence of a homeless shelter appears to have caused an increase in property crime by fifty-six percent. Within four hundred meters of that homeless shelter, which is two to three blocks. Now, what's what's very concerning is this isn't even a homeless shelter. This is just for someone to go in and get warm. And as was stated. Can just decide that they want to leave in the middle of the night. It it just, just to have a basement just for people to go get warm just doesn't sit right with me in a neighborhood that's full of children. Full of a lot of elderly people that have lived there for a very long time. Another concern of mine is that the city has adopted a vision of revitalizing Clinton Street. I've I've met with city officials and and both the mayor, the current administration and the prior administration that. You know, it'd be in the city's best interest to revitalize Clinton Street. The vision is to have a vibrant commercial area with mixed-use properties. And to put a homeless shelter in or a warming center for the homeless seems to go directly against that vision. For the city and for the residents of that area. Again, this is an issue that does need to be addressed, both by the city of Binghamton and Broom County. I believe that there are other areas of the city. That already have an infrastructure for providing these public services. Clinton Street is not set up for this. As a business owner, we pride ourselves on on. You know, keeping that area safe. Back when we first took, you know, bought that building back in two thousand and twelve, I spent the first couple of years in a pretty rough neighborhood. Really working closely with both City Hall and the Binghamton Police Department and cleaning the area up. Numerous times I put my own safety in danger to confront. Situations that were going on in that neighborhood, drug deals, assaults. We don't want to bring that stuff back. A few questions that I have, and I think that were already addressed, but I just wanted to address them on on my end as well. Is what is the what is the plan for when when these people leave? I know they said that we have a fleet of transportation and pickup points, but when they leave, where are we taking them? Where are they going when they leave? What's the plan when we don't have enough space on a very cold night? Or if you have two hundred people show up and there's not enough space for two hundred people? Where are the rest of them going, the ones that are turned away? Even even still, and I know I've spoke to some of the other business owners there already, we we do deal with. A lot of people walking the streets, coming by. Going through garbage, going through our garbage, going through our dumpsters, going through our ashtrays for cigarette butts. I've had a few instances of people coming around and and using. You know, going to the bathroom right in my parking lot. And I just, I can see if, you know, we don't have a solid plan for what's going to happen to. So these folks that either can't get in or decide they just want to leave whenever is I just see a heavy increase in those things. And personally, I just think that. A lot of us in the area have worked too hard to see the improvement that we've seen over the last ten years to just. Take a step back and go again against oppositely against that vision of of what we see Clinton Street becoming. I appreciate your time. I know there's quite a few other people wanting to speak, so I guess I will cut it short. But thank you for hearing me out, and I hope that we all make the decision that's best for the city. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anyone else who'd like to speak about fifteen Charles Street?
Hello, my name is Rachel Hendricks. I reside at forty-three Charles Street. I'd like to start off by saying that I have my degree in alcohol and substance abuse counseling. So I do see both sides of the. Again, like Mr. Kip stated, I'm not cold-hearted, but I am a concerned resident. As everyone can see, I have two young children that I brought with me intentionally. So you could see. There are young children in this area. I'm less than two blocks from this proposed site. I'm not opposed to solutions for the homeless and shelters, but I am opposed to the location. I've resided in this immediate area of forty-three Charles Street from two thousand and twelve to two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen to present day. The crime rates have already increased significantly in our area and our neighborhood since COVID hit in two thousand and twenty. And there are younger families with children that are increasingly moving to the area. As well as the ones that are already established there. I have several concerns. To start with, the proposed site is point three miles from the popular First Ward Park. It's point five miles from the Boys and Girls Club. And it is one mile from Woodrow Wilson Elementary, where my daughter is in second grade. Students from pre-K to fifth grade are considered walkers if they reside within one mile of the school. As was said earlier, the hours would be five PM to seven AM. If someone decided to leave at seven AM and they had a pocket knife. My daughter would be walking to school at that time. Totally unacceptable. It's unsafe. It's unacceptable. I don't think there's any reason we need to subject our children to unsafe areas where homeless people will be loitering the streets and walking around. Taking these distances into account, how would this homeless population be vetted? Not all homeless are bad people, but what about those that are? Felons, sex offenders? Are we really considering housing them so close to areas where our children live, play, and attend school? The San Diego DA's office conducted a study in March of two thousand and twenty-two. That found that for felony level offenses, the homeless are up to five hundred and fourteen times more likely to commit crimes. And are often repeat offenders. They're also a hundred and eighteen times more likely to die from an overdose. We've already had issues in our neighborhood, like Mr. Kip has said. We don't need to add anymore. This would be bringing more unwanted drugs to the neighborhood that we're raising our young kids in. The University of Pennsylvania did a study in Vancouver, which Mr. Kip addressed. The study showed that the presence of a shelter caused property crime to increase by fifty-six percent. Within a hundred meters to four hundred meters from the shelter. That puts our residential area in danger for increased theft from vehicles, which we've already had, breaking and entering and vandalism. In addition to our children and crime, my next concern is home values. September of two thousand and nineteen, the New York Times reported on a study that concluded. A homeowner will get twenty-four to twenty-five percent less for a property near a shelter versus a property without a shelter nearby. It's funny that Mr. Burns was here tonight because I actually wrote in my notes. If he would be willing to take a twenty-five percent reduction in value of one of his properties. Not to mention that, this whole proposal has been kind of sketchy from the start. There's been no news reports, flyers, and no communication to any residents or businesses about this, so our concerns could be heard in person. Instead, a street sign with tiny print was posted on Charles Street that no one can even read unless you approach it. While shelters are a critical service, they impact a lot in the surrounding community, and I do not believe fifteen Charles Street is the place for this.
Alright, thank you. Alright, anyone else who'd like to speak about fifteen Charles?
Good evening. My name is Amy Iverson. I live at. Good evening, everyone. My name's Amy Iverson. I live at thirty-four Mile Street, Binghamton, New York, one three nine oh five. I'm a resident of the First Ward, and I hear everybody's concern. Concerns about the homelessness population. I've heard the statistics. I live right off of Miles and Lake Ave. So we already have a problem in that area. And so when when I heard that there's a shelter, when we're going to have a shelter that's going to actually house, right? And help people that are struggling with homelessness, drug addiction. And I knew that ACBC was going to be participating in that. I also know that there's a lot of resources that come along with that. So when we're looking at the barriers that people have to reduce homelessness, to get into treatment. Like, those are all things that are going to also be part of the program. It's not just a warming center. It's not just someplace like a flop house. It's really an avenue to kind of assess where people are at. Look at crisis prevention. Give necessary mental health treatment. So there's a lot of things also that are involved here than just, you know, having somebody walk in off the street. And this is, and I don't think we're talking about busing people in from like all over the state. This is about Binghamton. This is about Broom County. Overdoses are happening right now. I know that we had a fatal. Homeless, you know, person that has died off Clinton Street. So, I mean, I don't know, I just want you guys to hear like what else is going on and. You know, all of the other services that are going to be a part of what the the shelter is. It's not just someplace that somebody can go and, you know, sleep. They're actually going to be able to engage with people that are trained. You know, so I mean, I live in that area, and so when people are talking about property taxes and what does that look like, I'm concerned as well. You know, but I also know that if we're able to have someplace for people to go, because if you go down Clinton Street at night. People are out there and we're talking about, you know, I heard concerns about whether or not they have knives on them. If somebody has a knife, they have a knife. You know, it doesn't matter if they go to a warming station or whether they're walking down the street. You know, at least we will be able to take that from them, talk to them about where they're at. And assess whether or not they need to go to CPAP. The other things that are taxing our police department. So when they're on calls all night long because people don't have any place to go. You know, the right now, the hospitals are emergency rooms are being taxed with people just using those resources as someplace to stay warm. So there's a lot of different things that, you know, that we need to look at. And I understand businesses and, you know, when you're looking at what does that look like? I don't think that the the warming station is really going to be. You know, it's not like I think the gentleman that owns the union said, you know, it's not a shelter. It's a warming station, and it's someplace where somebody can go. The other thing I wanted to bring up is that. Voices of Recovery Center has a daytime program that's open five days a week right up on Glenwood. So it's already, those resources are already right there in the community. So if you would just take that into account, and thank you very much.
Alright. Thank you. Alright. Sure, I think we can't turn the mic up. It's up as high as it can go, but anybody who's going to speak, just please pull the microphone right up to your mouth. Alright, anybody else that would like to speak?
Ladies and gentlemen, good evening. My name is Jason Kavarek. I reside at one thirty-three Sunrise Place in Vestal, New York. And I am the fourth generation owner and operator of Kavarek Hardware, which is located at two seventy-six Clinton Street in Binghamton. For the last one hundred years, let me say that again, one hundred years, my family has been invested in this community. We've given back to dozens, dozens of charitable organizations. And we try to help out as many of the folks that come around the hardware store that we can that have fallen on hard times. Now frankly, I think that the proposed Clinton Street revitalization initiative is a very good thing. Not only for my business, but for the businesses of my friends that have come up here and have spoken already tonight. The mayor had talked about his vision, and he described it very well. That Clinton Street is a natural extension of the downtown area. He described that vision as being a cultural center for the arts and it being ideal as a place to live. For families with young children and students as well. However. How can we achieve this if we're planting a flag for homeless invagrants to come and set up shop? We already have a problem in the first ward with squatters and non-paying tenants. Multiple times per week. I need to ask someone to leave because they're harassing my customers or my employees. And frankly, I don't need any more of that. I don't need my business to suffer because folks are afraid to come into my business to shop. Let's be honest, folks. If they're coming to sleep at fifteen Charles Street, where are they going to go afterwards? You can talk about busing them here or busing them there. They're going to wind up in Clinton Street and they're going to wind up in the First Ward community. I personally don't think that this is the type of of initiative that is going to help us revitalize Clinton Street. And I just wanted to take a minute to thank the other business owners that have come down to express their opinion. And I ask you to take these comments seriously as you deliberate on whether or not this is something that is good for our community. Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Mr. Caccadorian. Some of you know who I am, some do not. I own a business and live in the ward. Uh, and uh, own quite a bit of property in the first ward. I uh, came down here because. As Mr. Kvar just said. And some other residents, we have already had a problem. And we're dealing with it now. I've caught several times. Vagrants trying to access a vehicle. To rifle through cars. I've caught them right on the very property. That the ACBC now owns. Uh, several times late at night. Um, because there are not any high-impact lights are strong enough to light that parking lot. The issue also comes down to they've cut through fences there. To access the property. I've caught them. And just recently, an incident where they cut through the fence. Be completely fenced off and gated. And then, just recently, next to the Body Shop. On thirty-eight Jarvis, right next to the building that runs from Charles to Jarvis. They cut the lock to access the alleyway between the two buildings in the Body Shop. Right? And I caught them in the, in that uh, access area. And I've thrown them out. Now who is gonna go ahead and police this when the police are so busy as it is? And they are not uh, able to keep an eye on these people. That are doing this. It's, it's. It's just. Uncomprehensible to. See this project go forward. And I'm, I'm hearing that they're planning on trying to put apartments in the basement. To house some of these people. Well, I found out and did a check on it and found out that the, the fire, it, it won't even pass fire code. I don't know how they're gonna get this through a planning board. So there are many issues to this project that should be addressed. Now, I'm not saying I'm against housing people that need it. But you know, I. I don't know if the development, developmental center. Up on Glenwood might be a better place to put something like this. So it's away from the, the populace of the city of Binghamton and the first ward. Uh, because I don't think this is. Conducive to our area. Uh, it, it just doesn't feel right, doesn't seem right. And that's how I feel about it. And those are my comments. I uh, I have some issues on my own that I have to handle and I could take care of. But uh. That's not the place. For uh, to talk about it right now, but. I am telling you that I feel that this. Project should be really looked at and scrutinized very carefully. Okay, because we have the problem there now. As uh, Mr. Kavark mentioned. As uh. Adam uh, Kip mentioned. Uh. We deal with it all the time and it's still going on. Thank you very much for hearing me.
All right, thank you. All right, anybody else who'd like to speak about fifteen?
Order of procedure. Sit this out. Because two of the speakers, members of my family are in business dealings with them. So I better recuse myself. People that come up, made opinions. I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think you would have to recuse yourself because you, you, you know, you disclosed that information, but you're entitled to.
Yeah, I should be good. I wanna make sure we. I think that's it.
Okay. All right, for the record, Joe's gonna step out and recuse himself from this project. Based on some of the people that spoke tonight. All right, anybody else who'd like to speak about fifteen?
Hi, my name is Cody Wood. I reside at forty-three Charles Street. Um, Rachel Hendricks, who spoke earlier is my fiance. As a resident and um, someone who works out of town awful lot for work. It's gotten to the point now where in the four years I've lived there, in the last year. There's more homeless people, more people that we've noticed in the area. That me as someone who works out of town, I can't trust. I had to put cameras up. We had to put everything under lock and key. We've had multiple things stolen. And. The fact I can't leave for work without knowing my family's gonna be safe the whole day I'm gone. I don't think housing them at fifteen Charles Street is the right opportunity with all the young families there, because I'm not the only one. That has to leave their family during the day or for the week to go do my job. And I also house cars down at Garo Cachadorian's lot. To the point, we've had to throw people out that are living in our cars. And I go through to clean them out and I find. Twenty-some needles. I find cough medicine. I find anything it takes. For people to get high. And. This is right next door to where they wanna put this facility in. And I don't think it's the correct thing to do, not with little kids walking around, not with. Families walking around. I mean, like I said, they get released at seven AM. Where, where are they gonna go? They're not, they're not gonna go a long ways because they know at five PM, they can be, go right back in to have somewhere warm to sleep at night. So they're gonna start rummaging through people's cars and how, you know, possibly breaking into houses if people go to work. I mean, they're not, not gonna go more than a block or two away when they know they have a warm bed to go lay in every night. So the fact they're gonna use a transit, I don't, I don't think so. So that's just my quick thoughts.
All right, thank you. Thank you. All right, anybody else for fifteen?
Hi, um, my name is Olivia Bridge. I live at sixteen Mick Lamar Ave. I'm in the city of Binghamton. Um. So I just wanna point out that what I've been hearing from a lot of the, you know, the public and their concerns is that there's already a problem.
So just pull that right up to your.
Okay.
Perfect.
Um, what I'm hearing from the public is that there's already a problem in this neighborhood. And the purpose of this warming center. From my understanding is to not only give them a safe place to sleep for the night, but to. Connect them with services that could potentially get them off of the streets. And um, if there's already a problem, why not give them the services that they need? And um, you know, I. Have. Directly been affected by the services that ACBC provide. Um, myself was homeless. Um, I am personally in recovery. And ACBC has played a huge role in that, in my recovery. And. Why not have those services to, to the people that need them? So.
Thank you. All right, anybody else who'd like to speak about fifteen Charles?
Uh, good evening. Uh, my name is Matthew Mayette. Um, I'm a co-owner of seventeen Charles Street. And I reside in Kirkwood, New York. I'm all for uh, support for the homeless and um. I'm just, I, I'm not really sure about the mechanics of where they enter and where they leave. My business, I have a practice, a physical therapy outpatient practice. We have a tenant downstairs. Our operation starts seven in the morning. So we have people driving. To the parking lot down Charles Street. Some are walking, some are taking public transportation down Charles Street. To get to our office and clinic. So I'm just concerned about the mechanics of. When people leave. And around the same time that we start. Um, I have staff that arrive at six thirty in the morning. Um, it's, our parking lot's pretty well lit. Um, I'm just concerned about the proximity to. Uh, possibly more people. Put traffic in that area at that time. My tenant downstairs has mentioned he's had people walk in. Wanting to use bathrooms and um. Um, he's had to turn people away. Um, our, our building is open. Uh, we don't have a. A lock key system where people have to buzz in. We don't have a security. We have security cameras, but we don't have. Any other security means. I'm curious about. How. Um, that area fifteen will be policed, if there's gonna be added security. If there will be uh, people escorted when they leave. Or are they just gonna leave and? And I'm assuming they're leaving out of the Charles Street. Door. Which is right next to our building. So I'm concerned about when they leave, when they go. Um, our business is open till six PM, so we're getting them on both sides. When we start and when we finish. But I'm all for it. I've, I've had a son that's had addiction issues and he was clear, he was nearly homeless and he had great benefits from the support. From this, from the. Staff of uh, what the Addiction Center will be providing. So I'm all for it. I'm just concerned about the mechanics of public safety. And people using businesses next door. And that's my main concern.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else who'd like to speak about fifteen Charles Street?
I just wanna note that we did get a letter in opposition from Michael Andrews. I don't know if, if everybody got a chance to read that.
Yep.
Um, my name is Jeffrey Swan. I live at uh, twenty-seven Park Street in Binghamton. Um, you know, this isn't San Diego. This isn't San Francisco. This isn't Arizona. This is Binghamton, New York. Okay, the problem is right here at our door, at the front door, so. I don't think anybody has really the right answer, but they have the right motives. And the right connections to, to try to turn this around. By to make the connection with these people. Um, these, this homeless population, yeah, there, there is issues there. There's always going to be issues there, but if they don't have someplace to go to where they can can possibly get connected to the services that they need. We're always gonna have the problem. You know, why not um, give them an opportunity to be connected to these services? Maybe it'll work, maybe it won't. That's a crap shoot, okay? I happen to be one of those examples where it did work. I was homeless. I was sleeping under a bridge. I was doing drugs. I was doing all that great stuff, but, but the. The thing was that the, the connections that I made that allowed me the ability to turn it around. That's just my own personal experience and. I would like to see that personal experience for other people. As well, you know, there's a risk there and I understand that there's mental health, drugs. There's some really bad behaviors out there. There is a risk out there. I, I guarantee that. Well. This problem just isn't gonna go away. It's just gonna get worse. If we don't try something. Warming center, I, I don't know what the answer is, to tell you the truth. We have to try something. Because it is on our front door and it's going to get worse if we don't try something. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right, anybody else for fifteen Charles? You know, is there any problem with leaving the public hearing open until after the? Um, applicant has responded to questions in case this gets held over?
Uh, no.
All right.
You, you could also, just to be clear, you could also close it and then reopen it if you think that's appropriate, but either one's fine.
All right. All right. Well, seeing nobody else heading down to the microphone, I guess we will close the public hearing for now. A lot of questions and comments?
Yeah.
If you can make sure you respond right into the microphone, everybody will want to hear your responses.
We will do our best.
All right.
Um. Obviously, a very complicated issue, homelessness, um, not, no easy answers and we're not suggesting that there are. I'd just like to step back and just talk about. Sort of the process tonight and, and the process and role of the planning board in the um, conversation. So um, this, this property is zoned um. Industrial. Let me just double check my notes. Yeah, light and medium industrial. This is not even a residential. District that this building is located in. So this is one of the highest zoning classifications in the city of Binghamton. It's not a single family. It's not a two-family. It's not a multifamily. It's an industrial use. And within the uses permitted within that industrial classification. Um, by special permit are social services. And social services, just to reflect, refresh your recollection about what the definition of that is. Um, support services for specific populations or the community at large. Also includes transient housing related to social service programs. Alcohol and drug rehabilit- rehabilitation facility. Community residential facility, human service agency or a methadone facility. So against the backdrop just of what is happening here tonight. The legislative body, the elected officials have made a determination. That this location is zoned as it is industrial and that these types of uses are permitted. Subject to special permit in these districts. So there's already been a decision that this is an appropriate location. For this type of use. Um, so I'd just like to start there. So um, we're not, we're not thinking about it as being a residential use. I think that it's important to consider all the speakers' comments with respect to. The existing condition of the whole city, but in specific. Response to some of the business owners who have reported issues in these neighborhoods. That's the whole purpose of having a facility such as that. There won't be people wandering around in the middle of the night. They will wanna be inside where they're warm, where they're getting something to eat. Where um, they're safe. Where they are connecting with other available services and mental health professionals. So. The whole point is to make an effort to eliminate some of these concerns. That have been expressed by the neighbors, some neighbors and some business owners. Is it gonna? Clear up the homeless issue in the city of Binghamton? Absolutely not. Again, we're talking about a maximum occupancy of forty people. Um, so we're not talking about several hundred people. Just trying to flip through my notes. Um, it, it's a hard conversation to have. I, I, I do have to say I take extreme exception to cla- classifying. People as sort of these people. These are people that are entitled to services as much as anyone of us is. Um, and these people are people that are in a lot of instances seeking out. Assistance, seeking out connection, seeking out treatment. Um, and those are the people that we should be focusing on. And I'm gonna ask Carmella to go through um, just some of the. Larger questions, maybe that we went over last time that other members of the audience did not hear, um, in terms of security, in terms of. Um, sort of where people go. Again, this is not a court-mandated detention facility. This is a, a, a place where you, you can go and you, and you can leave. But you can't come in at all times of the night. Right? So isn't there a time that you can come in and a time where no more, you know, where you're not allowed to come and go? There's a smoking break. Um, but other than that, you, you're not allowed to come in and out. But I, I think it's really important that Carmella. Go through sort of some of the more, um, some of the mechanics. As opposed to just what we reminded you about earlier on in our presentation.
So generally, the model that's been implemented in other communities has been folks coming in at five o'clock and leaving around seven. You know, to address the concerns about time. You know, to address the concerns about timing of when kids might be going out to the bus stop or walking to school. We could certainly stay open later in the morning. We could stay open until ten. You know, typically, where are homeless people during the day? They're everywhere. They're at McDonald's. They're at the library. They're at Boskov's. They are everywhere. There's no place that you're gonna go right now in Binghamton where there aren't homeless people. And certainly our presence on Clinton Street, we just bought the building November thirtieth. You know, we had a mental health clinic right on Clinton Street. They left because of the they said the neighborhood was unsafe. So like, we're not coming in and creating a problem. We're going to come in and sort of help a problem. And when you've been outside all day, maybe not known where you were gonna go to the bathroom. If you were gonna be able to get something to eat, you know, once people come in, they have dinner, like they pretty much just wanna go to sleep. You know, like, it's not gonna be a situation where we would expect lots of issues and problems. It's voluntary. People wanna come and eat, get some rest. And we would certainly be willing to have people stay longer and get connected to resources. You know, uh, and other environments, they have timed when individuals leave to when D S S opens. So that hopefully we can bring people right over to D S S and help them work on more permanent housing solutions. So you know, this, this is a very significant problem. We're not looking to make it worse or spoil a neighborhood where there's already tremendous issues. And I applaud the revitalization efforts. We're not going to come in and disrupt revitalization efforts. You know, our intent is to put twenty million into this building. That it's going to be beautiful and it would employ a hundred people. We already have a hundred employees, like we need the space and the community needs the resources if you wanna see things get better. You know, I and I think just being aware, like, having a bar that's open late at night, like that attracts activity, you know, we're going to try to, you know, provide a place that's quiet, warm, doesn't involve drinking, doesn't involve substance use. Okay, and and I guess, you know, for context, this model's been implemented by Catholic charities in Syracuse, New York, and Oneonta, New York. In Albany, you know, we're a little bit behind. It's being implemented in other states, you know, so it is something that can be done, you know, in a way that's calm, in a way that's not disruptive to the community. Okay. Okay, also with regards to staffing, you know, we have approximately twenty certified recovery peer advocates that work at A C B C. They complete forty-six hours of training. Part of that training involves how to work with people that have experienced trauma, who might be impaired by substances, how to connect them with resources and how to keep things calm and safe. You know, at any given day in our clinic now, you know, we can do a fire drill and have two hundred people in the building. So you know, we have experience and that's, you know, without having security, without having law enforcement present, you know, I think with appropriate training. There's a lot that we can accomplish to keep things safe, to keep things calm. And certainly, you know, like, we would be implementing additional safety features such as a metal detector, cameras, lighting. Um, and and we're not gonna have people congregating outside, like, that's not the point of going to a cold weather shelter, you know, like, it's to bring people inside. Eventually, there will be more offices in the building. On the first floor will be where we move our outpatient clinic, where we'll have medical services. A food pantry. On the second floor, there's plans to have employee daycare and employee gym administrative offices. And currently, there are apartments there. There's student apartments. Catholic charities rent space and has warehouse there and programs, so it it's already in use for certain things.
Yeah, I think jump in and.
Could you explain more about the outpatient services that are to Paulo?
Yes, so A C B C currently has a main location in Binghamton. We have an outpatient clinic in Endicott on Main Street. We have a clinic on the campus of the children's home on Shiningo Street, and we also have a clinic in Norwich. So these are, you know, similar to outpatient primary care visits. People go in for assessments. They have individual counseling, group counseling, family counseling. We do lots of referrals, so if people need a higher level of care, such as like going to a detox or going to inpatient, we provide those referrals. Oftentimes, we do provide transportation. As I mentioned, we have a fleet of vehicles. I think we have maybe in total, close to twenty vehicles now, so we transport people all over the state and into Pennsylvania if they need other kinds of referrals. Forty-five of our clients currently are children, with three of them being ten.
I went back and looked at the staff report on these properties. I'm gonna read out a couple of things from it. Uh, the upper stories of the building currently contain office space in the dance school. What are the hours of operation of the dance school and how much overlap would there be between the hours of the dance school and the opening time of this center?
So we know we're not gonna be able to open this warming center for this winter. You know, we would be looking for next winter. And the dance studio, I believe, stays open until eight or nine. But we wouldn't be renewing the lease after their lease terms out.
So the dance studio is moving out. Let me go back to the the next paragraph. Clients will be received in the warming station beginning at five P M daily. There is a ten P M curfew and no clients will be able to enter or exit after that time. Clients must leave the next morning by eight. So I I just wanna dive in on this and part of it's gonna sound like I'm trying to trap you and honestly, I'm not, you know, I'm really just trying to make sure I understand. So I can go in starting at five, but I can come and go until ten. But I'm closed in at ten?
Scheduled breaks. You know, if a person wants to have a cigarette, we could go outside. They could take a break.
But after ten, no smoke breaks.
Right, after ten, lights are out. And it's supposed to be to go to sleep.
But I could leave potentially at three A M if I don't wanna stay anymore, which I think you said earlier.
Not locked.
It's not locked, okay. So I just wanna make sure I, like, like I said, I'm not trying to trap you, but I want to understand. Clients must leave the next morning by eight. They could leave earlier if they want. Doesn't sound like there's any
Right.
Time when you you may depart between six and eight. You can leave at three or four. It doesn't.
Yes, a person could decide to leave.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understood that and I have nothing further. Thank you.
Chris?
Carmella, a couple of operational questions for you. The current plan, uh, curfew's at ten. And the current capacity under the site plan would be for forty beds. So the forty-first person shows up or someone shows up at ten oh one. What happens to client number forty-one? Or the client who shows up because of, you know, his watch is bad and he shows up at ten oh one?
If it's ten oh one and I have room, I'm gonna take him. You know, otherwise, if it becomes much.
He shows up significantly, you know, late enough that you don't wanna violate curfew, maybe. Maybe they show up at midnight.
So what we would do now, because it's code blue tonight, they have to call nine one one. They have to be routed through emergency services. So, you know, in addition to what A C B C proposes, the Y M C A does code blue. The Y W C A does, the V O A does. So there are other agencies that we would work with. And then, of course, you know that there's around three hundred and fifty people being housed in hotels because they're homeless right now. So I think I had mentioned before, you know, our hope would be to take single individuals so that families could be placed in the D S S hotels. Which are full.
Maybe this, I'm not sure if this is, Carmella, this is for you or if this is also for you and Sarah jointly. I think one of the concerns that many of the residents have raised, and I think it's a legitimate concern, is that regardless of the current homeless situation throughout the city, throughout Broom County, nationwide. The concern is, will this be a magnet that will draw more homeless people to this neighborhood that are currently there right now? With all the ancillary concerns for public safety, quality of life issues, et cetera.
No more than the library, no more than McDonald's, no more than the other warming stations that are usually in churches in other communities.
You've also, you've you referenced both tonight and in last month's meeting. Uh, the examples of other warming stations in Oneiana, Syracuse and Albany that you're using as a model for this proposal. Do you have any? I don't know what I'm looking for. Reports, study, information about the success of those. Those warming stations as far as their impact on the community. Are there are there things that you could show or share with some of these concerned businesses and neighbors that could put their minds at ease? Hey, this is being done in Syracuse and it's not a nightmare.
I could certainly look into that. I have to say, it does feel uncomfortable. And I feel like it's very othering because honestly, like, look at downtown after the St. Patrick's Day parade, like, look at downtown after SantaCon. You know, and the red solo cups and kind of what we go through, like, what are forty homeless people in my basement like really going to do? You know, like, we're going to connect them to services. You know, I can give an example, over the summer in Endicott, um, there was an encampment on the riverbed towards Mercer Oak Park. There were a couple of encampments. We did outreach to those spots. One of the young persons that was homeless, he'd been homeless the entire summer. And it got to a point, he was on a waiting list for housing where he said, I'm either gonna kill myself or walk to Florida. He is housed right now. You know, like, th- these are people that, like, they are looking for help. Some of them are very stuck. But I I feel very confident that we'll be able to help people out of homeless where they're not gonna need the warming center. Right.
And I and I appreciate your concerns about the othering, but I think we have to so be respectful of that, that the the business. Their feelings are valid too.
Absolutely.
As with all zoning matters, in my experience, it's what you don't know that you're the most afraid of, right? It 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 could be this, it could be a gas station, it could be any of a hundred projects that I personally have been involved in over the last twenty years where there's a change. There's a concern. You know, can we remove all concern? No. But we can first of all, choose a location that's already zoned appropriately. We're not asking to put this in an R one single family residential zoning district. This is an industrial district. And you can rely on the track record of a proven agency that has more experience than any other agency I'm aware of in this county. That is operating successfully, so much so that they've run out of space and bought a building and and are gonna be utilizing that to provide additional services, I think. At at some point, you just do have to take that step. Everyone is not gonna be happy. That that's for sure. And I think to to the extent that we are able to put the right people in the right place to provide the services, that is exactly the situation you have here.
I I'm gonna voice my concerns to, I I respect and and the work that you do and and I know that there's a strong need. I know to speak to my colleagues, I I I would like to see some more community impact studies from the other areas. My my concern is beyond the the businesses, the I know it's an industrial neighborhood. We also have the walking of of schoolchildren. You know, my son growing up was a school walker. And that hits home for me and it makes me concerned about about the things in the neighborhood. I know this has to go somewhere. So I don't seem to be careless or ignorant to this, but I would like to see before I would go forward some impact studies for other neighborhoods. I don't know if this is a possibility or my thoughts for my my other panel members.
We just don't know if they do that. And that's data that we wouldn't have independent knowledge of. We can certainly reach out and ask for it, but it doesn't exist. I'm sorry. If if the data exists, we can try to get it, but it might not exist. And I don't wanna promise something we can't deliver.
All right.
And again, I'm not again, site plans, special permit, that is the conversation today. So I guess.
I I just wanted to note something. The the applicant has talked about plans for the rest of the building. What's being proposed today, uh, it's a type-two action under seeker. Seeker does require you, though, as a board, to look at sort of the big picture, since the applicant noted plans for clinics, uh, outpatient rehab facilities and and other things in the building. It's something that should be considered. Otherwise, it raises an issue of segmentation, which is segmentation is splitting a project into parts that are small enough to be type-two actions or to not be significant. Uh, when there's a larger project that may be significant. Um, and given the size of the facility, it's possible that it would not be a type-two action if the project were being considered as a whole. So that's just something that the board needs to consider.
And I would say to that, we would have come to you with an entire project if we had funding or even a timeline for a a project, but we don't. So we don't know. I mean, these are aspirational goals to to fully develop the the building. But when that will happen, we we don't know. So in terms of secret segmentation, it has to be sort of reasonably foreseeable. It might be and it might not be. I mean, if the if the resources don't come through for some of those other possibilities, then the building will be continued to use as it is being used now for office space.
Thing I land in a similar place is Kelly and Chris regarding what I would feel I I needed. I mean, it's easy to give into the public sentiment and say, no, because I wouldn't want this in my neighborhood and I don't wanna do it to someone else. But I don't wanna make a new law where it doesn't exist, in essence. And so, as Miss Campbell pointed out, this usage is permitted for this property. But things I look at, standards for site plan review item, public safety, and feeling like, I feel like I have concerns yet to still be answered and given what I've observed from the peoples who came up to speak. They do as well, so I couldn't go forward with this as is right now. I feel like I would need more.
And what what more? It'd be help us to understand what you're looking for. It would be nice if there was a, you know, a study or something, but I don't know that there is. So in the absence of that, what other information, like, would you like the police department to come and speak to you? Talk about increased supervision in the area?
Well, I think all of that, increased supervision, I think doing a a search for studies and and, you know, maybe they exist, maybe they don't, but I think the effort has to put into to doing that and you know, I personally am concerned about the possibility that somebody can just leave in the middle of the night. I know from a practical standpoint, you can't lock them in. That's very tough to enforce, but I think that was very negatively received by others who came up and spoke and as soon as I said something about it, it was like, oh, we don't want that. I wouldn't want that either, so.
As opposed to having someone just walking around all night? Which you can't prevent anyway.
Fair enough.
Let me ask a question to Carmella if she knows the answer, which she might not. How many people leave? How often does someone actually leave?
A comparison, like, who wants to leave the warming center? But, you know, people leave the hospital against medical advice. They leave inpatient rehabs against medical advice. They leave the bar and drive when they shouldn't drive. So I'm I'm not sure, you know, like, I think if we were operational, we'd have some data about that, but I don't, I don't really know.
Carmella and Sarah, two two thoughts. First, taking a step back to what else could you guys provide for us to chew on and digest? Carmel and Sarah, two two thoughts, first taking a step back to what else could you guys provide for us to chew on and digest? One of the things that has come up a couple of different times was what happens after? Seven AM, eight AM, ten AM, regardless of the actual time when the warming center is gonna close. And the clients are dispersing to their other. Daily activities. You had mentioned you have a a fleet of vehicles that you could use to help get the clients to other places. One of the things that may be helpful is if there was a more detailed plan. For, okay, here's an idea, Monday, it's eight AM, it's ten AM, I'm again, I don't care about the the actual time, but you know. Here's our plan for it, we have forty clients who spent the night in the warming station. Here's our plan to get these forty people to the library, to DSS, to the veterans' office, to wherever else they're going. So that there is not the residents concerned that there's gonna be this large influx of clients. Interacting with young children on their way to school. Again, if there's some sort of like a, here's an Excel sheet, we've got drivers lined up and we've got cars and we know we can do all that kind of logistical stuff. That's the kind of a five-page PDF that might be something that we could digest and like, okay, there's. This is more than just hopes and dreams, there's an actual plan here, it's just one example.
That's fine, I mean, we we know the resources, you know, our clients that are at the YMCA, the YWCA, the VOA that are in shelters right now. They go to treatment, they go to DSS, they go to the very, they look, they go to workforce. Not as accessible for them because it's, you know, some of the services moved up to the mall, so you know, like. People can do things and we can lay out those options and and give a schedule of when the vehicles could assist.
The second suggestion I would have, and this is not necessarily going to be achievable by April at the next meeting. But if you're looking for a longer term answers, if some of that data. That we talked about, like what what the impacts have been on the local neighborhoods in Syracuse, Oniana and Albany, if that's not. Existed in a report right now. A sincere, honest answer I would give you is reaching out to the MPA program at Binghamton University. And the Masters of Social Work Program over there, there are, I'm sure, master students who would love to help you guys. Collect that data and put into something, now again, it's gonna be something that we'd have by the April meeting, I don't, I don't wanna promise that, but. There are people out there who would love to help you develop that stuff.
So I've been an adjunct there for eleven years and I'm on the advisory board for the MPA program and I can. But I I guess it would also. I guess I'd also include some of the studies that the MPA program's done on gentrification in Binghamton and how that's created homelessness. And some of that information too.
You good, Chris? Steve, anything else? So I don't know if there's a a concrete answer for this, but. It seems like. A large percentage of the concerns have been about like security. In the neighborhood at opening and closing. And I think if there was a concrete answer to how that gets handled. It probably would help. I don't know what that answer is, but we don't need to have that today, but I'm just saying.
I completely respect that and and we can try to put forth more detail in that area, it's just. Right now, like our homeless are dispersed everywhere, you know, like if we could create like an underground tunnel to like. You know, from the sneakiest, most discreet spot and get them in and get them out and no one would see them, but like they are literally everywhere right now.
Yeah. All right. Any other questions, concerns, comments for tonight? It's sounding like we're probably gonna table. All right. Sorry, the public hearing is closed, so. It it's not time. Most likely, if additional information is presented at the next meeting, the public hearing would be opened again. And people could comment on any new information that was brought up in the next meeting, so. All right, so. Are you guys, you said you've probably missed your window for this year. So tabling it tonight is not going to cause an enormous problem for your logistics or, okay. Are you opposed to tabling it tonight? Okay.
No, no, I mean, we're we're happy to attempt to get you whatever you need to put you in a position to be comfortable.
All right, anybody wanna make a motion to table the project? All right, there's a motion to table the project by Steve. All right, seconded by Kelly, all in favor? All right. All right, that's six in favor, zero opposed to tabling. So have you back in April? If you wanna come back in April and we'll. Listen to any new information you've got to present.
Well, we hope we'll be able to submit to some American.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so no decision tonight for fifteen Charles Street, so that takes us to our last. Applicant for a public hearing. Diane King. Project address is eighty-one State Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of an eating and drinking establishment tavern in a below-grade commercial tenant space in the C2 Downtown Business District. Welcome back. If you don't mind talking directly into the microphone tonight as you. All right.
Diane King, two Lathoff Avenue, zip code thirteen ninety-five.
All right, get your get your face right down in there when you're speaking, you're good, we got, we got your name and address, but when you go on, just get right up up to the microphone whenever.
Oh, okay. I talk loud anyway.
All right, so what has changed between last meeting and this meeting?
Could I introduce myself as well?
Yes, absolutely.
Sorry, good evening everyone, my name's Dylan Yang and I live at one thirty Murray Street. Since the last time we spoke, we actually updated a few things, we have the updated security plan. That's been reflected in our engineering floor plan, we have added four existing cameras and we also be utilizing the afford new. Cameras, so before we also be utilizing the exist- existing cameras in the exterior. Secondly, we also decided to move the trash room to the rear. Part of the bar, the reason being, we just don't want to have a lot of traffic since the original plan, the trash room was in the front and that's kind of where the patrons would be. Entering, exiting, so we just kind of wanna reduce the conflict with that, so.
All right. Excellent. All right. Any questions or comments about the changes? All right, well, why don't we do this, we'll open the public hearing, we'll see if anybody's here to speak about the project. And then we'll have you back to the microphone to address any questions or comments. All right, so this is the public hearing for the applicant Diane King. Project address is eighty-one State Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of an eating and drinking establishment tavern in a below-grade commercial tenant space in the C2 Downtown Business District. If there's anybody who would like to speak about the project, please come to the microphone. Man, the crowd really cleared out. All right, and we didn't receive any letters about this project?
We did not.
Okay.
So the these are the updated floor plans, it it just shows the the trash room in the rear.
All right.
No, no other significant changes.
All right, all right, we're seeing nobody approaching the microphone, we'll close the public hearing for this, if you don't mind coming back up, having a seat. All right, so you addressed the security measures, cameras. I think at the last meeting, you said the there is no elevator, correct?
No.
No elevator? All right. All right. I don't think there was anything else, anybody have any other concerns, questions, comments? All right. So at the last meeting, we decided that this was a type two action because it's involves a reuse of an existing commercial building, so no further environmental review is required. So I'll make a motion that the requirements for the site plan review and special use permit have been met. All right, seconded by Kelly, all in favor? All right, that's seven in favor, zero opposed. All right, when's construction start? All right. Sounds very non-committal. Gotcha, all right, sounds good, well. Good luck.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
I just wanted to remind the board that one seventy-four Clinton Street was tabled until the end.
Yes. I'm sorry, are you with one seventy-four Clinton Street? Oh, I'm sorry, you missed your window at the beginning, you had to sit through this whole thing. All right. All right, so we tabled one seventy-four Clinton Street, so we'll. Look at that again, all right, so we'll go back to seeker determinations, so our next seeker determination will be for the applicant William Durham. Project address is one seventy-four Clinton Street. This is a site plan review and special use permit for the establishment of a retail cannabis business in an existing commercial space in the C4 Neighborhood Commercial District. If you don't mind just giving us a little blurb about what you're planning to do.
So it's very new business, so it's kind of hard to answer some questions, my name is William Durham, first of all, how you guys doing? And I live on the south side of Binghamton, one fifteen Park Ave, been in the neighborhood for a while. Couple of different businesses doing construction. So right now, we're in the cannabis business, right now, we're opening Ethica New York with a retail location. So Binghamton was granted approval for delivery location, so I'm looking into this location for storage. Of the cannabis product and delivery only location.
All right, so nobody, nobody's coming to this location to purchase from the building.
Zero.
All right, just storage.
Yep.
All right. Chris?
When you say delivery only, this means like you're mailing things out or this could be like Uber Eats or DoorDash?
I wish it was that easy, but yeah, so we'll be doing car deliveries, bike deliveries, moped deliveries. Right now, we're just sticking to vehicles, it's a new business and we're gonna start off kind of small, so we'll take it slow, start with the vehicles and work our way into different. Forms of transportation. Definitely.
Excellent. All right, we had one other approval recently for a cannabis retail establishment and they talked about security a little bit. Do you mind just filling us in on security concerns for this type of business?
Security concerns, so we do, right now, we're working on a security system in Ethica, New York. Twenty-eight camera setup, it's gonna be live feed. So you know, we'll be able to monitor whatever's going on on a twenty-four hour basis, basically. I really don't have any consider- uh, security concerns myself personally. We've been in the area for a while, we know the area, my wife operates a hair salon directly across the street. Own a couple of properties in the area as well, so. I mean, it seems to be okay in the area, I'm not too much worried about security, but we do have plans in place. For certain procedures as far as delivery, setting up in the morning, moving out with our orders and securing a location at night.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or concerns? All right, with no other questions or concerns, then I'll make a motion that the proposal involves the reuse of an existing mixed-use building, which is a type-two action under seeker and that no further environmental review is required. All right, seconded by Manny, all in favor? All right, that's seven in favor, zero opposed. And I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing for the project at five thirty at the April meeting. All right, seconded by Steve, all in favor? Seven in favor, zero opposed. All right, so we'll see you back in April and we'll do the same thing we just did with all these people.
Thank you for your time and I will be here on time.
Oh, think about how much quicker this would have been, you would have been out of here.
Trust me, it's been a long day, it's just added to it, you know, so it's all good, I really appreciate it so much.
All right, we'll see you in April. Thank you.
We move on. Um, Tito, just a question for you. I I remember quite a while ago when the first, the local cannabis city law was passed, there was a that fancy color-coded map. Where you could and you couldn't, I'm assuming when any of these projects come forward, you guys are planning or. Cause I don't have that color-coded map memorized about like how far from schools and yellow versus red lines and all that kind of fun stuff. You're double checking that stuff or?
So that map, that map was based on the state requirements for licensing. That was not a locally adopted regulation, so our our zoning code just allows it in certain zoning districts. And you have to be licensed to apply in the state. Exactly, the state wouldn't issue the license if he didn't meet the requirement, yep. No, yeah, yeah, he got, he he got permission from the state to do delivery here, correct? Uh, no.
For storage?
No, he's good to operate at this location and the ethical location, so he has licenses for those two locations.
Yeah. All right. All right, well, we're on to other business and we've got one thing on here called stadium district rezoning.
So if you guys recall, it was a while ago, the stadium district master plan, which is a economic development and sort of planning proposal for the area around Rabbitoh Stadium. That was adopted by the city, that plan called for rezoning of certain parts of the stadium district. To make development in those areas easier, and so that's what we're proposing here. Basically, the industrial areas would become commercial, which would allow more uses, including residential, which is what we want. Industrial districts don't don't allow residential uses. The lower intensity commercial district that Henry Street is now would be sort of upgraded to a higher density district. And the intersection of Pine and Fayette, which historically has had a cluster of commercial businesses there, would be made. Sort of a low-intensity commercial pocket, so that the businesses that are there now will become legal. And can expand or change business types, put up new signs and things of that nature, which they can't do right now because it's so unresidential. So those are the three main things, is make the industrial districts commercial, make Henry Street a more dense commercial area that that'll promote mixed use. And then make that commercial pocket on Pine and Fayette zone commercial. So we, what we want is a motion to to recommend the adoption of the rezoning. Or recommending the council not adopt it. And also to make a recommendation as far as seeker is concerned.
All right, Tito, can you, there's one little parcel that was outlined here, right, right off of Pine Street. This little guy right here. Sorry, it's that little that was separated out, why? Yeah, what is that?
So that is part of the parcel. So that is part of the parcel. That is the fire station. Before the fire station was proposed, there were multiple lots that make up the current lot. That section was residential lots fronting on Pine. That that, those have since been demolished. That's part of the fire station. The zoning there doesn't really matter because it'll be the fire station. For a long time, but we just wanted to sort of clean up the map, make that parcel one zoning district.
All right. All right, anybody opposed anything on there? Anybody want to make a motion to? Adopt? All right. Motion from Kelly to recommend adoption of the. Zoning map changes.
I'll second.
All right, seconded by Manny, all in favor? All right, seven in favor, zero opposed. And you needed a secret?
Yeah, if you could go down the list and I'll I'll pass you a staff report now. If you don't mind.
Do we have to read them all off? Or can we just say across the board? It's fine. It's no or small impact.
I can't make you read the list.
Okay.
But it would be appreciated.
Okay, all right, here we go.
You really are.
You read it pretty fast, too.
You did a good job tonight.
All right, so I'll make a motion for a negative declaration or a recommendation that city council makes a motion for negative declaration. Based on the following. That the proposed action may involve construction on or physical alteration of the land surface of the proposed site. So impact on land, no impact on land. No impact on geological features. Are you okay if I just do the headings of each one? All right, no impact on geological features, no impacts on surface water, no impact on groundwater. No impact on flooding, no impact on air, no impact on plants and animals. No impact on agricultural resources. No impact on aesthetic resources. No impact on historic or archaeological resources, no impact on open space and recreation. No impact on critical environmental areas, no impact on transportation, no impact on energy, no impact. Sorry. No impact on noise, odor, and light, no impact on human health. It it is consistent with community plans and it is consistent with community character. So motion to city council to. For a negative declaration. All right, seconded by Steve, all in favor?
Hi.
All right, seven in favor, zero opposed. All right, anybody have any other business they want to talk about?
Um, earlier when we were discussing the fifteen Charles Street project. One of the things that Ms. Campbell stressed a couple of different times was this. Property is zoned industrial. And that's factually accurate. But how nearby are there residentially zoned properties, which I think. Needs to be considered. If there are residential zone properties within. Across the street, down the street by two, by two, you know, by half a block. I mean, I. I want, is is that legitimate to con, to consider that there are residential properties within X meters of this site as well?
I think so. I think you can consider neighborhood character and the neighborhood goes beyond just the zoning district that this is in. This is in the urban business park district, so that's a correction to what she said. It's not light and medium industrial. It's the urban business park district, which is. For. High-tech industrial, sort of clean industry, and it allows mixed-use development and residential as well. And then to answer your question about the distance. So there's this parcel. There's Mr. Ketchadorian's. Junkyard, for lack of a better word. And then right across the street from from the junkyard. You have your first. Properties there in the residential zoning district. Beyond his junkyard, the next parcel is the parking lot for ACBC. That their staff presumably their clients would be using. And that abuts a row of, looks like ten, one and two family houses are are right next to that parking lot for ACBC, so it's close.
Tito, I, I, when they mentioned about. Another, where there was a rehabilitation center was on Clinton Street. We voted on that about four or five years ago. And there was a line and people came in in support of it, within a corner of Clinton and somewhere. So it sounds like it failed and not there anymore.
Uh, what what she referred to was the Greater Binghamton Health Center on Clinton and McGatt. Uh, which was a mental health place that was there for a long time.
Okay, no, this was something we voted for. Five, six years ago, maybe. It was, it's something to do with drug rehabilitation.
Sorry? Is it fair? I mean, Fairview was recent, though.
Right on Clinton Street, though.
Right on Clinton.
It was right on Clinton Street.
A rehab facility on Clinton Street?
I have to look. I'll look back and if I got old notes.
And that's vacant.
Yeah, yeah.
But that was for mental, that was a mental health. I can't think of anything else without.
I just remember there was a major amount of people coming in, talking about it, and it's like. The whole issue's like refresh that. And my sitting back was because my son does snow removal for both Reunion Hotel and Kovaric, so it's. Even though it's not a close conflict of interest.
Right.
Close enough that. I don't want to. Get that involved.
That makes sense.
It's a tough decision. It really is. One way or the other. There's a lot of pros and a lot of cons.
All right. Anything else? Any updates on the delinquent site plan on Front Street there, the? Tow truck guy?
Uh, no, no updates right now. We did reach out to the other, your other complaint from the last meeting. I'm not sure where they stand, uh, B families.
Okay. All right. All right. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn? Steve makes a motion to adjourn, seconded by Chris. All in favor? Seven in favor, zero opposed. All right, thank you.